Right, everyone, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands in my nation. Welcome, everyone. For normal practice, we'll start with the review of tonight's agenda. We will do the oaths of office for mayor and city councilors who went through an election cycle this last election. We'll then go to any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then have an election for our next city council president. We will then go to public comment. There is a public comment that was submitted for this evening. And then we'll go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from December nineteenth, as well as the appointment of our library advisory board members. We'll then go to new business where we have our hood view disposal and recycling rate increase discussion, as well as contract award for the community campus park improvement project. We'll then round off our evening with report from our city manager as well as our committee and council reports. Jeff, please call the roll.
Yes, councillor Maiden.
Here.
Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Exner.
Here.
Councillor Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Maybe we should have done that after the oaths. All right, let's do it. Oaths of office. Go first. Well, you were on your way, so we assumed you were.
Please raise your right hand. I stand, pull in, do solemnly swear.
I stand, pull in, do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States. And of the state of Oregon. And of the state of Oregon. And that I will, to the best of my ability and to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of Mayor Sandy. Faithfully perform the duties of Mayor Sandy during my entire term of office. During my entire term of office. So help me God. So help me God. Thank you. Appreciate it.
There you go. See? We've got a volleyball game to go to.
Sorry.
Look. Raise your right hand. Repeat that for me. Hi, Chris Maiden. Do solemnly swear.
Hi, Chris Maiden. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. I'll support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully, faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mayor sitting there right dead center looking like a goofball.
Hi, Laurie Salps.
Hi, I'm Laurie Smallwood. Do solemnly swear.
Hi, Laurie Smallwood. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
During my entire term of office.
My entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Make sense to someone that could. Then councillor Exner. We can try this virtually.
I'm here.
Hey, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Hi, Carl Exner. Do solemnly swear.
Hi, Carl Exner. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of city councillor.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, councillor.
Right, with that, I always like to go around and give the new councillors or the ones that have just gone through reelection an opportunity for a couple of words to say, Chris. I apologize, yeah.
The mic turn closer. Yeah. Well, thank you for, um, thank you for letting me talk. Thank you for letting me be here. Thank you for the opportunity. I've been a planning commissioner for almost five years, so I know what it feels like to sit on the dais, but I'm really excited now to start a new chapter where I can help make an impact for our community a little more. Influence some of the, you know, my friends in the city and the constituents that voted for me and, and, you know, lean on some of the pressing issues that are at the front of, of my agenda as well as most of your halls as well that help our community. I'm looking forward to spending four years and learning from you all over the next couple of weeks and months on the decisions that a city council makes because that's going to be different than when a planning commissioner does. So I'm, I'm excited for this opportunity. Looking forward to serving.
Next, um, yeah, I'm just really looking forward to continuing to work with everybody up here and serve the community, work with staff and continue with some of the great projects that, that we've been working on for the last four years that, that I've been here and into the new ones that are yet to be. Carl, I know you're a little under the weather. Is there some words you'd like to say?
Oh, just that I look forward to the next four years and working with everybody and I really do want to spend some time getting things done and working with each of you guys on the city council. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Awesome. And for me, I'd just like to thank everyone and it's been an exciting past four years. I spent a couple of moments at our last city council meeting talking about some of the successes that our city council, along with our team at the city, have accomplished. And I just, you know, we haven't accomplished everything, you know, we, we still have a long ways to go and we still have quite the agenda in front of us as a council. Uh, we have made tremendous strides with our wastewater treatment facility. Uh, you know, I had mentioned a while back being out there a couple of weeks ago and being able to see, you know, the improvements. Uh, we continue to get better and better updates from, you know, our team at, you know, Public Works and, and at the city about, you know, some of the reports that we get back. I don't know, I haven't talked very recently. Hopefully we still are getting very strong reports, but there's a lot of improvements. Uh, water, we just in our last, uh, meeting for the last council adopted our, our water, uh, master plan. Both of these are incredibly expensive infrastructure projects, some of the largest in our city's history. It's going to take a collective effort of all of us here on council, uh, working, uh, with our staff to go out and, and to get the money, you know, to get it from other elected leaders at, you know, the state and federal level to also be working with, with folks at the agency levels to be able to get, you know, the grants and, and the money procurement that we need. Uh, we've talked a lot about Bell Street 362nd and we're going to be able to actually open that as our, as this council. But it's also talked about the significant investment that we've made in that project in our street fund. And so we need to be looking at our street fund and really heavily thinking about some of the investments we make there and where we're going to project that out. Same, we've had a lot of conversations about our, um, about our urban renewal district and about prioritizing those funds and about being able to be in a better position to make decisions as a council body about those investments. We need to make some heavy strides over this next year and a half, two years as a council body to really, really heavily dial that in. Uh, we have things in our code, uh, that we've talked a lot about that we need to address of loopholes for development and different things. This moratorium that we have gives us an opportunity and a slowdown in our planning department that we can hopefully start to address a lot of those kinds of loopholes. They're also in the middle of the comprehensive plan, the master plan, the visioning efforts that we're going through as a community that will give us an effort to really look ahead and engage folks in how we want to grow, you know, with growth being stressed upon us so much. Uh, and then finally, I just, I really think this is an opportunity as a community to go all in on tourism, uh, here in Sandy. Uh, you think about what we just had with the holiday lights and mining park, the excitement that that gave our neighbors, the excitement of people coming in. I think that's just the beginning of what we can do. Just, it just, just the cusp of what's possible here in Sandy. Not just during the winter, but when you think about the concerts in the park and the different enhancements and improvements and exciting things that are going on in, in our recreation department. This is really an exciting time for Sandy. I believe over the next 10 years, we're hitting that point where your, our population and our tax base is getting to one where we can have these incredible amenities and opportunities for our neighbors here in Sandy. But at the same time, we're still small and nimble enough where we recognize people at that grocery store when we go in. We don't have a lot of bureaucracy for our city staff to be able to dream and then implement and get those things done without a lot of hurdles in their way. The only hurdle is us, right? And, uh, and if we, and we're only a hurdle if we don't work together. Um, and so we'll be having our conversations about our goal setting that's coming forward. Uh, I had some things I needed to hear back from Jeremy on that I put back on on some committees. So I'll be getting those committee assignments, um, out to everybody. Uh, but I'm looking forward to the next two years. I'm excited about the talent that we have here on council. I think everybody here, every single person on this council brings kind of an individual, uh, talent to, to our board. And I really appreciate it. Just look forward to really accomplishing a lot with all of you over the next couple of years. Thank you. All right, with that, I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. All right, seeing none, it's now time for the election of a council president. I will now open up for any nominations.
Mayor. Can I make my first nomination?
Sure.
Yeah, I would like to nominate councillor Smallwood as the next council president.
All right, cool.
And I'll second.
All right.
I'd like to nominate Don Hockinson.
Awesome. Sorry. Awesome. So we have two nominations on the floor.
You say Laurie's?
Oh, yeah. Back set up in the middle. Let's go.
Let's go. Okay, real quick.
All right, is there any more nominations? All right, with no more nominations in place, we have two nominations for council president and two seconds. Uh, how do you get, let's go ahead and do a, do a vote. Uh, yep.
Uh, councillor Maiden.
We're voting on.
So we can choose which of the two.
Smallwood.
Uh, councillor Smallwood.
Would be a little weird if I didn't vote for myself, so.
Councillor Sheldon.
Don.
Councillor Walker. Councillor Exner.
Uh, Smallwood.
And councillor Hockinson.
It's making interesting. Where's it going to be, Mayor?
All right.
Mayor Pulliam.
Uh, I'll vote for councillor Smallwood to be council president.
Mayor, that's four votes for councillor Smallwood and three for councillor Hockinson.
Congratulations. And we would have been extremely well served if either.
Thanks, you guys.
Um, all right, with that, it's time for public comment. We do have a public comment that's been submitted. If only we had a podium set up for.
Here I go.
Yeah. We can't make him set up his own podium. Well, welcome. Uh, please, a reminder to state your name and address for the record. Uh, you have three minutes.
Yeah, Jeremy Peetzel, 39997 DeBarco Drive, Sandy, Oregon. 97015. Uh, yeah, just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you for the great.
State your address again correctly.
9055.
I think you know that. 7, 97055. Glad I'm bringing humor to the table. But I want to start over because I was, wanted to say, uh, for Laurie's sake, there, I was running around the city, thinking about all the time I served. Um, and just want to say thank you to all the staff and all of you for coming out. It's been great. It's been joy. You aren't going to get rid of me, as you see. Um, but it is fun to sit on the other side sometimes and be able to state your address wrong. And still have fun doing it. Um, but you're in good hands with Chris and everything I know about Chris. And so we said that before, but just thank you all. It means a lot to me of what the things you said. And I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. And I'm really glad you've already taken us up on our invitation to come and testify in the council's hearing. I hope you continue to do so. Uh, with that, uh, let's move ahead to our consent agenda. Uh, unless there's discussion, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt.
I would just, uh, point out that we had a wonderful cadre of folks, um, folks who are stepping back up to serve. And then we had one new addition and it'd be wonderful to have them, where she was very impressive.
Yes, it was great. Yeah, thank you for that. And it was funny, as we were starting the interviews off, it was like, uh, you know, we have the right amount of people interview and do we need to go through this? And it was like, wow, we had an incredible, uh, group of people in our community that applied. So it was great. All right, so our motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second it.
There's a motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Walker to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye.
Mayor abstain.
Yep. Yep, uh, two abstentions, um, and then oppose, nays, or thumbs down. Motion carries. Right, moving ahead to new business. We've got the hood view disposal and recycling rate increase discussion. Welcome. Best part of your guys' job.
It's good to see you guys in person.
Yes, it is.
We were going to say the same.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council. Um, as you're aware, hood view disposal and recycling holds an exclusive contract for servicing the city of Sandy's solid waste recycling and yard debris removal. Uh, the original contract was put in place, I believe, in 2014 and then just over a year ago transferred to the Waste Connections umbrella of services that's still operating under Khu slash hood view slash Waste Connections, depending on what line of the email signature you read. But annually, the franchise agreement allows for an adjustment in the rates. The last rate adjustment occurred in March 2020 and was equal to about a dollar and 21 cents per month. This rate increase that, uh, is being proposed this evening, um, is about 5.6% in, uh, total about a dollar and 89 cents per month for the 35 gallon cart service. Um, the franchise agreement in section 7.3 specifically states that, um, essentially, I'm going to paraphrase here, but if the request from the provider meets the criteria of the agreement, the council shall approve the request. Uh, upon staff's review, the request does meet the guidelines of the, um, agreement as stated. Sort of my high level summary, I'm going to turn it over to, um, Josh Brown and Chris Wright from Khu. Hood View Waste Connections. Answer any questions, uh, write any other information they'd like to add and then open it up for any questions, comments, feedback from the council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity this evening. Uh, as Tyler said, my name is Josh Brown. I'm the district manager for Hood View Disposal as well, as well as several other markets that Waste Connections oversees. Uh, Chris Wright is our local, uh, site manager that, uh, oversees the day-to-day operation. So to your comment, it's nice to see you all in person and meet you, uh, face to face. So, um, I don't have a whole lot more to add than what Tyler already mentioned. I think we, uh, displayed our case pretty well in the letter. Our company, much like anybody, any other company and organization right now is, uh, facing a lot of challenges and headwinds with inflation and, and costs and uh, labor, including, uh, acquiring equipment, parts and materials. And so, uh, you know, as Tyler stated for our contract, we, uh, are here before you to, uh, request that, that annual increase and uh, continue to, uh, invest in our company and provide service in the city of Sandy. So, again, I don't have a whole lot to add, but certainly open to questions and, and or comments.
Quick reminder, doesn't have to be an annual increase. It's an annual review. It doesn't have to come every year. Right, is there any questions?
Okay, um, did anybody kind of look at any other surrounding areas, um, that deal with, uh, what is the other one, waste?
Waste management.
Yeah.
So the.
How does this compare to what they're charging, um, other communities like this?
I have not done, have an analysis based on other, um, waste haulers. Something we could definitely look at just for your guys' knowledge to know sort of what the market rate is and where we're at here. Um, but that has not, had not been done to date. That's the. That's where I asked for that.
It'd just be good to know when you're looking at.
All right. Quick question. Yeah. Okay. So I know we talked about this a long time, the last time we met, so not going to go. Uh, but, and just to summarize what I think I learned last time is these grades by, which are the franchise agreement are basically determined through a series of formulas based on essentially what we call your, your cost that you're paying to others to, they could call it tipping or dumping those rates. Is that correct? And so really we're just taking those new vendor costs, rolling them all the way up. It's formless and it's. So the only oversight or governance thing that I think might be potentially missing is have you validated that those tipping fees are legit and real?
I have not called those individual sites to confirm the rates that are being charged. We have the, the standard. No. We just followed the standard process, which has been the letter from the provider with their updated rates. Uh, the council wishes, uh, you know, I'm more than happy to call over the next week or so to confirm or provide additional documentation to confirm.
It seems like this, like to me, that seems like the only governance part that we really have.
Sure. Yep. And the intent tonight was to bring this before the council, have a discussion, get the questions answered if there were any, and then follow up at the next council meeting, um, you know, all questions were answered, just put it on consent and, and authorize the rate adjustment. I'm happy to do some legwork between now and then and just be able to provide you with some additional, you know, information to make sure proper oversight is conducted before you officially approve those rated increases.
Okay.
Yep. I have a question, Mayor. This is, this might be rudimentary because I'm new. The other point of the, the calculation I saw was also tied to CPI. We're likely to probably a peak of 50 years high CPI. So the reasonable question I always have is, okay, this price goes up five and a half percent this year, will it go down when the CPI drops back to normal three and a half, four percent? Will, with the, does your company offset that by reduction in rates? Or is it all just annual increases? Yeah, that's a fair question. Um, obviously, I think, I wish we all had a crystal ball looking forward, we'll be able to, uh, determine those CPI rates. But to answer your question, absolutely, I think to your point, we are in some very high record-breaking inflationary times. So, um, if our company and, and those costs decrease, then we're certainly willing to look at that. I think to councillor Hockinson's, um, comment is a lot of our fees are derived from other vendors and local municipalities where we dealt material, our disposal fees, which is part of that equation. And so oftentimes what we see is those rates typically rarely go backwards. Um, so, you know, our operating expenses do have some variation and we're certainly willing to look at, uh, any big decreases and evaluate that in the city of Sandy contracts. Sure. And one more follow-up on that. Please, probably for the city, do we have a cap rate on the contract or is it open? How high?
I don't have the, uh, agreement in front of me, but what I do recall is the formula is split into two different, um, components. The first component has the 5% cap, which is what this proposal is based on, you know, CPI or 4%, whichever is less. The, uh, tipping fee component, I believe, is actual cost to the agreement, but I don't have it in front of me, um, at the moment.
So it's a combination of the both. It's.
Combination of the.
Cap. It's the, it could be, it could be the max of 5% on CPI plus.
Plus the tipping component. Yeah.
So typically, we, um, back to the question of administrative review, yeah, I mean, part of this is, you know, formulate, obviously, right, the franchise, um, and you know, staff to review and to make sure that, you know, trust and verify, right? Um, one way we do that is Clockless County, um, you know, sets rates, reviews rates for the entire incorporated area, right? So they have similar rate cases they bring forward to Clockless County, uh, who do a pretty extensive review of the financials. And I, it may be a little bit different, but it's usually pretty aligned with what you're asking, uh, as well as your service areas. I think you guys worked for rate increases in the summer. Mm-hmm. Clockless County, is that right? Correct. So we're a little behind here because we kind of fell off the schedule, I think, when the transfer happened. I mean, it would be nice to get back to or, um, maybe summertime review. Uh, and I think being around that time where Clockless County is doing the review of the financials is helpful for us because they have a team, the folks that do that. Sure. And do it in behalf of the whole Clockless County and they look at other jurisdictions and do that rate comparison, uh, to, you know, other service providers, but they in Clockless County. Uh, so it'd be one of my suggestions that, you know, we can work together to shift that schedule back into summertime. Uh, and, and that helps us too, just because we, we could just leverage off of Clockless County's staff work on that.
All right. Yeah, so I'm looking at the franchise agreement here on page 60. Um, so under 7.2, Tyler, this specifically says that the rate shall be fixed as per exhibit two for rate period commencing May 1st, 2015 and ending December 31st, 2016. One, I don't see any updated dates on that. But then it goes on to say that the rates shall be adjusted annually with city council approval. So I'm not an attorney, but the way that sounds to me is that we do have to approve them. And last time this came up, I was under the assumption that we're a little bit strong-armed in this contract and are forced to approve them. Well, if I read that, that tells me that I don't have to approve them.
I think you scroll down into section 7.3.1. The council shall make a good faith effort to approve it. That's the.
So I've read, I've read through, I know I haven't gone all the way to the end, but I've read through.
Yeah, so this question came up again.
I brought it up last time, but I didn't have this information.
Attorney, uh, David Duipman at the time said, uh, there is a paragraph in the contract I thought that I'd referenced.
We went all the way to David and David came back and said, we didn't have a choice. So I don't know if that's still. I'd like to, I'd like to review it. Please.
Sure.
So, Claire. Yeah, I've been here.
Yeah.
Carl, uh, one, one thing that I would like to say is, I know that it appears as if our ability to deny or agree with the increases, I think, have been the past have always been limited because of the contract. Like, I've heard this several times. Uh, so in that regard, I'm not sure that there's a lot of influence that we could do there. But one thing I do want to ask and to confirm is that there have been a few complaints in the past about when things are changed or are coming up, for example, some of the annual cleanup, um, days and, uh, weather changes and those sort of things. There's been some real struggle about getting that out to the public. Uh, the question I have is, is what have you put in place to be able to make sure that when these kind of changes happen or when special events happen, you can get us out and be able to identify that those are happening?
So I would agree. We have, we've struggled a little bit with communication. We've gone through some office challenges over the last six to eight months. Um, we've corrected those. We're having more chat up. Um, but as far as weather delays, we, we do a email blast, a call blast of all customers that we have a current email and current phone number for. We also post on social media. Uh, I should meet David Tyler, who also puts it on the city's social media pages. If we do the best we can to get that word out that, you know, we're going to have a service delay and obviously, we don't like having service delays, but the safety of the community and our drivers is, is number one when it comes to throwing our trucks and, and inclement weather. Um, the city cleanup that we did this summer, we sent mailers to every address we have in our, in our database, every active customer, residential customer. And we also posted on social media and communicated with Tyler, who also posted it on city social media. This was the first year we've done that door-to-door cleanup in, in a couple of years, as far as I can remember. Uh, obviously, you know, Waste Connections part of the company in October. So what happened prior to that, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, but I think we delayed that for a couple of years. So getting the word out again with, you know, probably, uh, didn't spread as quickly as it could have based on not doing it for a couple of years in a row, but.
I think on that, um, cleanup day as well, in the past, we had done it on your regularly scheduled pickup day. And this year, that transitioned to that, uh, I think it's a Saturday. And so just a little bit of a different structure for that program. Um, which was from, we heard it's a call with phone calls well received, that it was sort of a separate day and not junk sitting out for, you know, a week before their regularly scheduled day. Um, but we'll continue to improve. But we'll continue to improve, reaching out to customers and residents to make sure that they are aware of that day going forward. Definitely.
I would just kind of build on what Carl said, I didn't, you you have my email for billing, but I didn't get any notification. And then I called and and you did eventually get the message out on your phone line and. But it would be helpful to just get something on the. Your website as soon as possible and then share that with our folks, the staff, so that they can also get it on the city website, because a lot of people don't even know what, you know, what is what service they have, you know? It's kind of confusing, I think. So just, and of course, it was Christmas and, you know, everybody had twice or more of the usual stuff. And there was a little bit of an interesting discussion between my husband and I, what, you know, oh, it was always, they would always just pick it up as soon as possible after that. And that's how it always was. And then, you know, he's like, no, they're not going to do it till next Friday. I'm like, they can't with that. So anyway, a little discussion and, you know, I had him call and then I was right. And then he called back like two hours later and he changed the the decision to be the following Friday. So just, yeah, getting it out and helping us out to, I'm sure there was a lot of conversations about it on Facebook, people asking, just wondering. And it's always awkward when it's, you know, the holiday season to weather delays, but yeah, appreciate it.
Yes, it definitely was a good timing and it never, never is, but, you know, we, the day before Christmas or two days before Christmas, definitely threw some wrinkles into it that aren't normally there. And our office manager was stuck at home with no internet, which delayed our ability to get the the call blast and email blast out. So we apologize for the the slow, slow notification on that and we'll, we'll do better going forward.
I'm going to take a different tack, go back to to your point, Laura, I'm going to disagree with you on this one. Because, well, but we agree more, we don't. I just going back to that David discussion we had before here and then just looking at the word, there's the the terms that this thing's going to hinge on are shall be entitled to. Which is a grant of a right as part of the contract. And then it uses the council show approve it with a good faith effort, which means mutually beneficial without screwing either party. That's Don's word, but it's, that's, that's what good faith effort would be interpreted as. I don't, I, this is a rubber stamp approval for purposes of committing the dollars, not for negotiating the rates, the rates and the terms of how those rates are. I don't like this, but I think that's how it got worked and how what.
That's okay, I still like an attorney to look at it, as I'm not one.
Yep. That's just one quick question. Yeah. So so separately, yes, I'm just kind of curious. While I recognize you guys' seventy percent increase in fuel and other labor costs and everything. Citizens also are having a financial strain at this time. You guys offer any kind of, like, for for financial assistance for people that are struggling to to get their trash picked up? It seems like kind of a, that's a public service need, not just a want.
Sure. Yeah, that's a fair question. We get that quite a bit lately and. People are struggling to pay their bills, right? And our, we've experienced that probably just like city bad debt is higher than normal because of that. So we always work with our customers, we try to negotiate payment plans. Extend those payment plans and do whatever we can to get people to continue, be able to continue their service. As far as discounts or anything like that goes beyond what's in the franchise agreement, we haven't done that in the past, but certainly willing to to look at it. You know, see what kind of solutions we can offer to the public, because it is real and a lot of people are struggling right now, so.
Thank you. That's something we can look at, Tyler, something?
Yeah, we can have the three of us have a conversation about how the possibilities are with that.
Well, thank you for your time. Thank you for being here in person tonight. Yeah. See it, we'll do this here in a couple of weeks.
All right. Moving ahead to our contract award for the community campus park improvement project.
Welcome, Rochelle. The all star of the holiday season. You, it's you and Tim Allen.
All right. Well, thank you this evening, council and mayor, for the opportunity to speak to you about the community campus park improvement. So it was the desire of the council in consultation with the community campus subcommittee that the Parks Federation Department proceeds the development of the community park at the community campus. So before you tonight are two contracts for your review. The first contract is for the design and engineering services to Langau Hansen Landscape Architects in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. And the second is for the design and public engagement for a pump track and skate park to American Ramp Company for fifty two thousand eighty dollars. So Langal and Langit Langau Hansen will manage the overall site design refinement, public engagement and several engineering firms. Langau Hansen will also provide cost estimates, construction documents, construction permits, bidding assistance and construction observation. The process to select this preferred consultant was done by a selection committee and a selection committee included the Park and Rec Director, Development Services Director, the Parks Manager, the Parks Board Chair. And a CCS member who was present during the interview portion. So back in October of two thousand twenty two, our revised request for proposals was published and closed in November and we received four proposals. And the selection committee first graded those proposals and then decided to interview the top three firms. So after the grading and the interviews were conducted, we picked our preferred firm and it was a clear, a clear, you know, it's clearly Langau Hansen. So we issued an intent to award to Langau Hansen and we started to negotiate and refine the scope and costs. So that contract is what is for you tonight for the landscape designing and engineering. So the second contract is for American Ramp Company, which is A R C. So based on previous public input found in the Parks and Trails Master Plan, it was apparent that the pump track and skate park were the replacement of the skate park, which is deteriorated and aging, was a preferred part of the element. So A R C is a highly reputable recreation sports design and build firm. So for example, Velo Solutions, which is under the American Ramp Company, has built over four hundred and ninety eight pump tracks in over thirty two countries. So staff called numerous references and based on other agencies professional input, the city determined that direct contract with A R C was the best choice and has many benefits. So one of the benefits is that A R C can design a pump track and skate park under one umbrella, which is unique to the American Ramp Company. So A R C is the ideal company because of these elements are technical and the public engagement is very specific and focused. And directly contracting with designated build firms will result in design cost savings as well. So design and build companies like A R C, the concepts are their construction doc documents. And so at the end, we'll receive a breakdown of material types, quantities for construction for a concrete skate park and asphalt pump track. So A R C will work alongside Langau Hansen to create the best layout for our site design. And it'll be very collaborative between the landscape architect, American Ramp Company, city staff and a project advisory committee.
Sorry, interrupt. The project advisory committee is comprised of two.
So the project advisory committee is three staff and then members from the CCS. And then Parks Board and the co-chair for the Parks.
Okay, so the the Parks Board would be the the function of our residents being able to participate in this process.
Yep, and there there's going to be a robust series of public engagement. So there'll be three open houses. Those, there'll be an online survey and then it'll come before the council three different times after the date today. The, basically, the next three months are going to be like a marathon as far as trying to make a deadline for April first grant. So in the, in the next three months, we have about twenty staff and the architect with about twenty meetings.
So. What kind of feedback are we going to seek from youth in the community that actually skateboard, right? And like you see things because this, I I know nothing about this stuff, but I'll tell you, if I'm out in the community and the right kid knows that I'm the mayor. They inform me at like all the improvements and the things that we need to make at our skate park, right? So I just want to make sure that when the kids show up, they're like, this is our creation, this is what we want, this is what we asked for.
Yeah, yeah, and which was another benefit of directly contracting with A R C. So they'll do, they're going to participate in open houses, they have, they'll have three in-person meetings, they're going to do virtual soliciting of like what the youth want to see there. And so we've CCS and the PAC will provide a list of people who are interested in those focus groups, those public engagements. So yeah, we're going to try to do a wide, definitely, I think it's one of the key elements for this, if it's going to be a success. So.
Um, Rochelle, I I kind of build on what Mayor mentioned and when we were talking about it early, or there's a couple of folks in our community or that are like the.
Really into us.
Well, no, these are like, these guys have built skate parks, the one guy started the International Skateboard Education Association. He's phenomenal, he's built skate, built skate parks in all sorts of different communities, has huge amounts of technical knowledge, has the understanding of how to kind of incorporate, you know, beginner kids. And and then the more advanced stuff, so you don't get something that really can't build kids' skills. So with those kind, with that type of a expertise in our community, I want to, my expectation, I guess, was that they, that, you know, him and and another person would be on the technical advisory committee. Because they know, it's for the skate park, you know, way more about it than say, you know, the Parks Board, who, you know, again, doesn't know any more than you and I about skate parks and stuff. So is it possible to ensure those couple of experts are on that advisory committee?
Yep, absolutely. There'll be very specific and focused public engagement just for the state park and the bike element portion of it.
But are they on the? Uh, the advisory committee?
No, PAC is, so the project advisory committee will be the the ones like we talked about where there'll be three CCS members. And then it'll be oversight of the the whole project we meet, gosh, I think we meet like seven different times in the next three months. And so that would be part of what PAC would do is ensure that we're accessing the right people when we go out and ask about these elements. Then how we want to design and what we want our street parking pump track to look like. So you'll be very intimately involved in who's going to provide that that advice. And I've been taking notes too, as far as like the last year, who I need to have this, you know, to get to the table. And so I have a pretty good list, but always accepting additional suggestions to make sure we don't forget people. And that'll be the next step after tonight. If the contract's awarded, then we meet with the landscape architect in American Ramp Company this week to start providing them and cheating those lists of people who want to be involved.
I'd like to say something here. The specialists are really good and they, they do provide some quality input, but it's the people that are using the skate park and this new pump track that I really want to hear from. Those, some of those kids, their mothers have been on my job for several several years and I think they know what they want. And I think that's important, that we get that as much as we give some of these specialists. Specialists look at things, I think in my mind, a average or maybe community to community, but they don't really know all the details of what we're looking for. I'd love to just make sure that we get a good cross section of the users in these two events.
Great, so the only thing, I'll keep going, the only thing I'd add is I'd love to see some sort of law enforcement consultation on the location of these. And I know they're all going to the community campus park, but just visibility, site, access, just, you know, let's get, let's get some opinions.
Okay, so backing up just a little bit, so the next three months are going to be critical and pretty fast paced. So we do have a grant deadline of April first. And that if we would apply for that, it's a local government grant, it's a large grant, so we could receive anywhere from five hundred to seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards this project. And so over the next three months, we're going to meet with the PAC, the Parks Board, we'll host open houses, we'll conduct online surveys. And then there's tentative meetings scheduled to meet with you all and talk about goals and visions of the project, public engagement process, review of the decision options. And then finally, we would come back to the group for a review of the final schematic and then approval to through resolution to apply for the grant. So the next three months will be pretty busy. So this park project will accomplish the development of a community park, which is listed as a priority in the two thousand twenty two Parks and Trails Master Plan. And it also meets the intentions of goal eight for the council. And I was curious about this and was looking at the last time we developed a community park was in two thousand and fourteen and it was the ribbon cutting on March twenty fourteen for Bornstead. So this will be an exciting, exciting thing for the city of Sandy. So possible funding sources will include Parks S D Cs, three million dollars in cash urban renewal funds from the original purchase of the Cedar Ridge Middle School. And at this time, the design and engineering fees will be paid for out of the Parks S D Cs. And then at a later date, staff will bring back a construction contract or report in the council at a later date. So in closing, staff recommends that the council provide approval to the city manager to sign two contracts, so we can proceed with the community campus park improvement project.
That's great. Thank you for the presentation. We literally deal with questions. Are there more questions for all of us?
I have one other question.
Yep.
So, because that, that's a new, new fact for me about using all S D Cs to do the. Design. And what is the balance of the S D Cs? Maybe that's a question for Tyler.
Yeah, I just looked that up today, but fact check me, but I'm wondering about one point nine million dollars as.
So. Like half the money.
The total combined is four hundred and seventy thousand.
All right.
All right. All right, is there a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion too. What's the?
Mayor, there's actually two motions. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to make it, Catherine?
I move to approve the award of the design and engineering contract to Langau Hansen Landscape Architects and authorize the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars for the community campus park improvement project.
All right, is there a second? Say, here's a motion by Counselor Walker, second by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose nays or thumbs down? Motion carries. Another motion.
Go ahead.
All right.
So I move to approve the award and design of public engagement of pump track and skate park to American Ramp Company. And authorize the city manager to exec, to execute a contract in the amount of fifty two thousand eighty dollars for the community campus parks improvement project.
I'll send it. All right, there's a motion by Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Mayton. He's on the board. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose nays or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Very excited. All right, Jordan, spotlight's on you.
On vacation through today, so still getting.
All right, Tyler, get on up here, tell us what happened.
So I've been thinking staff about the last couple of weeks. Happy New Year. But a couple of storms we experienced over the last couple of weeks, and we talked about it with the waste connections there a little bit. The ice storm over Christmas, I just want to thank staff for for doing what they could. It's always hard when you don't get enough to really get the plows going, but getting sand down is helpful. And trying to get ahead of some of that stuff, I know we put a lot of de-icer down in anticipation of that event. The bigger one was the the windstorm with the downed trees, seen them all around town. The crew's been busy getting after those, we had a tree that fell down in in Mighty Park onto the adjacent apartment complex, DeBarko and Tickle Creek. Kate Schmitz had a tree that went down by the athletic club, so quite a bit of debris out there. Probably, there's probably a list of folks on the waiting list for for the chipper. But we'll get it cleaned up, bear with us and and I know these events can kind of be stressful. For the the future schedule, the next meeting on January seventeenth, mayor is a Tuesday, I understand that you'll be at the com.
Because guy, you stole my.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here, sorry. But it, so you know, the future schedule here, the the January seventeenth meeting is on a Tuesday night, so put that on your calendar. For council goal setting, the mayor and I are still kind of trying to nail down those dates, but looking at the nineteenth, so that long, that long weekend. And possibly extending it then on February, February, sorry, we're in February now. And then February twenty first is another opportunity there, which I think is also. There is that back to Monday, we have a lot of holidays with the President's Day and then okay day coming up. Next week, the leadership team will be meeting for preparation for goal setting, so we'll be reviewing. The the last biennium goals and then getting prepared for council setting, sharpening our pencils, coming up with ideas and kind of what's on our work plans currently and and what the council may be pivoting to for the next biennium. City Day at the Capitol is back in January now, January twenty fifth, starting at nine AM. We do need to sign up everybody by January nineteenth, I think we have the mayor, Counselor Walker, signed up so far. If there's more. Uh, if there's more than three, so if there's four, it is a quorum. So we just need to put a notice somewhere that four counselors will be together. Um, meeting with their uh senators and representatives. I think it's in the afternoon. Um, and we can work with Nelly to schedule those. I think it's like one to four.
It's a full day event.
It is, it is. I think it, yeah, there's, there's a lot of programming and I think even dinner and happy hour or something. After four o'clock too. So please let us know. It'd be great to have a couple more if you can make it. Um, I know it's, you know, during the week. I think it's a Wednesday. But um, you know, the board mayor.
So and council, so the members of the legislature I'm going to work with Nelly to set up meetings with for us to attend is. Uh, folks that are on the Capitol, in addition to our senator representative, folks that are on the Capitol Construction Committee. Uh, Capitol Construction is where we've been successful getting our allotment of funds and stuff for capital projects.
And then uh, finally, also in January, the next day is the Clark County Cities Association Dinner. I think it's Oregon City's turn. Um, so it's on January twenty-sixth. Uh, again, it's an evening event, a dinner, uh, in Oregon City. Uh, I think Jeff facilitates signing up uh counselors for that. And then finally, I'm also want to echo some of the comments, uh, to yourself and the team for all the holiday events in town this last season or over the season. Um, and of course, the, the holiday lights and all the events that came with that, you know, kind of working around the storms uh that came through. Um, but well received, just, just a great um way to, to shine up the community and, and do some, some great events. So something, a new twist on, um, on the holidays. And then, you know, the council had a great work session on um recreation. And fee recovery and things like that. And I think that, you know, obviously it's probably got us all thinking about, you know, the future of recreation. Um, in leisure activities, um, in Sandy and how we build upon what we've been doing. Um, and it's pretty exciting. I know it's probably going to be more conversation about that during goal setting and Mayor's comments about tourism. So um, yeah, we're looking forward to having those conversations and kicking off a, a new year in two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Dawn.
Cool. Um, love the lights. Love being able to um go down in character and before COVID took me out of the game. The um, met a couple of other people who would love to go down in character as well. So suggestion for next year is let me do a sign up. I think we could fill every night with, with the, the old guy. And perhaps as well.
That's why, I mean, Don and I are, are, we're working on, I mean, members of council, we're, we're filling up the nights, you know, we're going for it.
So, I mean, the mayor hinted at what, what this could become for us and, and I am all in on that vision. So that's, that's one item. The other item I would just wanted to, because somebody broke a record, can we get them? But we're looking forward to seeing a proposal for those speed sign indicators. Uh, on our main thorough first through town and a mobile one that we can put in whatever the neighborhood hotspot is at the time.
Thank you. Uh, Carl.
Yeah, copy. I wasn't sure you were going to hit me or after Kathleen next. But anyway, I have two things. One is, uh, I want to really compliment John Wallace out of the Community Center Department. In that when we had those really cold days, uh, that we wrote a setup, warming centers at the library and at the community center. And then also in the evening, uh, we put together a number of volunteers that were able to do all-night virgals, vigils. For those who needed to be cold. And I understand there was a couple of individuals that came in really late at night. On that last Thursday night that uh we're able to warm up. I, I know that we had some singers and lots of hot chocolate and that kind of stuff provided. So I want to say thanks for doing the coordination between the city and the ant farm in that respect. And then the second thing I wanted to kind of communicate is on a personal measure, I'm going to be gone from the seventeenth clear into the second of February. So I will miss the next council meeting and a few other meetings that way. And I'll be in Taiwan, so. A long ways away. And that should do it.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Um, just a couple of questions, Jordan. Is the um CCA thing a monthly thing or?
Yeah, so during COVID, uh, obviously it was paused, but this has been a tradition for, for several years. Where there's a rotation of cities that host uh dinners for elected officials in Clackamas County.
It's come, yeah, we need to get a plan together. Two, two months. Yeah.
It's in March or May?
I think we volunteer for March.
And then um, second question was, do we have a game plan on the Capitol Day as to, I get it that we're going to go to meet with the Capitol. But do we have kind of the um asks and the, you know, a plan, game plan?
Yes, a skeleton of one. Uh, I think we wanted people to sign up and then I, I think what we'll do is get everybody, uh, you know, together.
We do have a firm touch list.
We'll develop a bit of strategy on it. And so we're singing off, singing off the same sheet of music.
And, and it, and do we have a agenda item for a workshop on seventeen already or?
Uh, we do have a tentative one uh for the, for the campus park improvement. So like Rochelle said, it's pass a beer, so okay.
And then, thank you. The um, uh, yeah, the lights, uh, Christmas lights were really fantastic. The um, there was a lot of. Feedback from the community and I think that, you know, the ability to kind of bounce back after the storm was a huge benefit. Um, there was a lot of involvement from all the different facets of the community. And I think there's interest in, in um opportunities. For the, the different c- community groups that we have to kind of be, you know, a, a player, just like they are at the Mountain Festival. You know, raising money, selling hot chocolate, whatever it is, um, there's some great opportunities there to kind of collaborate and expand our outreach. The one other little ask I would ask, well, a couple asks, but, but the first one is pretty easy. Um, the light there by Ace Hardware as you're going south. You know, they have a bush there that you kind of pretty much have to get way into the walk, uh, the crosswalk when you're looking to, you know, like. Coming from my house, you know, to turn left, uh, to go east on Pioneer. You, you, you look to the, to Ace Hardware and there's a big huge bush there and you can't hardly see cars. That are coming down Pioneer going east because that bush is so big and you kind of have to get really into the crosswalk to be able to see it. So they could kind of just cut back that bush. I think it really improved the safety. I've kind of noticed that last year. Um, and then the second thing is just again, gonna broker record. Um, the, I know there's been some progress on putting up the signs for the trail crossing um on Debarco. Um, they, they got put up, but they got put up exactly at the trail crossing itself, which does, which, you know, the people on the trail already know where the trail is. So we're, um, Jenny said that they were going to kind of have another go at it and move the trail crossing approach signs. You know, at least one hundred, whatever this appropriate sign distance is a way for the cars to actually see that there's a cross. So that's um glad that there was some progress. We just need to kind of get it revised a little bit and move forward with that. But thank you for all the hard work, uh, Michelle, and this um RFP and all that. That was a huge crucial. And I'm really, we've got like a really intensive schedule and a lot to get done. We're really well placed. We have great uh contractors and we're really well placed to be very competitive with the um, with the grant program this year.
Kathleen, is there a work session you're hoping we get on the schedule?
Well, I, I just didn't, you know, with the strategy thing, I didn't know what the. So, you know, I was like, is there time to do that, do that during council meeting or workshop or whatever, just kind of go over the gap. I mean, we just meet, you know, individually or, you know, as a small bridge that's going, whatever, however that looks best.
Cool. Yeah, that, that could have worked. That just reminder to everyone, I mean, you have an idea on a work session and stuff, you guys, please, please feel free. Bring those forward. Um, Brett.
Uh, not a whole lot. I just wanted to um kind of echo the accolades towards the public works, especially with the, the wind and the ice. You know, about they were jumping on the spot, get stuff done. I really appreciate to see that. So um, on that, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Lori.
Yeah, um, just on top of that, because some of you may not be aware, but the, the public works did a great job of every tree that fell. They were, they were there helping shut roads down. So that's fantastic that they were able to keep up with some of that stuff as it, as it was happening in real time. Uh, huge thank you to Parks, like has already been mentioned. Uh, the lights were awesome, although I'm really disappointed that adult night I canceled. Yeah, and not rescheduled, so. Yeah. And then uh, just kind of a, a, of a pseudo-professional update and, and something that I'd like to see what the appetite of the council is. If you've not had to call nine-one-one in the last month and a half, um, you may not be aware that we're waiting anywhere from forty-five minutes to an hour. To get ambulances in Sandy right now. Um, and if that is your emergency, that just does not work. So um, they are under county contract with the county board of commissioners and uh that contract seems to be just kind of. Being pencil-whipped continually. Um, they're not meeting their time standard uh for service out to Sandy. And like a lot of places, they are having staffing issues, but in desperate times require maybe some creative solutions.
Where are they at? Like, do you know where they're at with the timing of the contract or anything like that?
Their contract has just been um, just, uh, just, what's the, what's the term for it? Um, where it's just kind of allowed to continue?
Yeah, for sure.
So there's no competition. Um, per se for them. Um, but like I said, an hour is ridiculous. And uh, I've been on two calls recently with uh trauma patients where we've waited an hour for an ambulance. And again, if that's your emergency, that's just not going to work. So um, I would like to check the appetite of this council to send a letter to the council and county commissioners. Uh, asking them to please um, review that contract and that they need to put some pressure on AMR. That, that needs to be resolved. So.
So the problem is not the nine-one-one wait time.
It's not, no, it's not.
It's, it's the response time.
Christmas morning, there were three ambulances on staff in all of Clackamas County, all of the county. Yeah.
Um, are there more? Yeah. Are, are there ways of figuring out, do they track? I, I just wonder if there's a little bit of research that can be done between now and maybe our next meeting where we make a decision that, because.
Yeah, for sure.
A bunch of us would be interested. Um, I mean, we got to seek around, but is there some research? I mean, are there things out there? I know like we could call dispatch and find out the average wait time for that. But I don't know if we could find out the response time from an ambulance.
We can request that data.
They have, they have all that data. Seacom has all that data.
Probably a decade ago that the contract was.
Yeah, and so it's been, I can't think of the term. What is it? It's night where it's, where a contract is just kind of allowed to just continue. Um, and that's kind of, kind of been where it's at. Um, you know, it, I just, I feel like there's really no pressure for them to fix the problem.
Well, if you don't look at a metric and unless the governance party, if you're not governing, then yeah, whatever works, you know.
It's a combination of staffing issues, but also call them. I mean, for.
It's mostly, it's probably, I, I mean, I can't, I don't work for them, so I can't speak. I can't, I can tell you that there's probably a lot of it is staffing, but I can also tell you that. They're not very open to changing how they staff. So like, there's some, there's some things. There's some inside knowledge things. So like, Montloma County, part of Montloma County's contract is that they will have two paramedics on an ambulance. Whereas they'll put a paramedic in a basic in Clackamas County. Well, so because they're insistent that there's two paramedics on each ambulance in Montloma County. Then Montloma County is not giving any ambulances to Clackamas County, which has been a past practice, but right now that's not happening. So it's a combination of a lot of things that's going on. Um, and it's just, can I, you know, my concern is obviously for the people of this community that. Eventually, that's going to be a real problem. So.
Should we ask Sandy Fire if they'll get in the transport?
I beat that drum.
But, but from a city, we could send a letter to the county. Requesting the data, just to give them the heads up. And then based on the data, we could turn that around to uh.
The nearest station. I mean, I know we have the uh, so here, they most, so it's just a maintenance facility. The nearest transport is coming from work.
Yeah, they like to um, basically put them at Autumn Boring, yeah, but. Home major school, middle school, where they've gotten close to these days.
Well, let's send that inquiry letter. And if everyone's okay, I mean, and then um, does anyone have any problems with me calling a couple of the commissioners?
Nope.
Jim, it's cool. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, Chris, you're up.
Well, I don't, I don't have anything, so I haven't done anything yet. I do have a couple of comments. Um, January twenty-fifth, if you're not wanting to quorum, um, I'd be happy to take some time off of work to go do that. I know most of the people on that committee this year.
We'd love to have you. Love to have you, Chris.
And then um, then. At February nineteenth right now, for some reason, what was that? That was a.
We'll say.
That was the goal. Is that a confirmed date?
Did you mean the eighteen? That's what I was wondering too. February, yeah, eighteenth, it's a Saturday.
It's eighteen.
Yeah, but that was a screw up. Seventeen, so February eighteenth. Good job, Chris. You're on it, man. We should have a Tyler up there. It's brutal crap. Uh, you get, all right. Um, well, congratulations, uh, City Council President. We even, we were able to do it a lot better than the folks out in Congress today. That, that's for sure. Um, the uh, uh, oh, I already said campus park. Let's do that. Um, so the holiday, holiday season, again, thank you Rochelle, your department and everything. Uh, what I really wanted to say on it and Kathleen, um, uh, you know, kind of pointed to it as well, which is. You guys were given every excuse in the world not to continue to do that. Uh, after, after the windstorm, Christmas was over. Uh, you know, the holiday had come and passed. There, I mean, you were given every excuse. And I think it says a lot about the character of your guys' department, leadership all the way down. That you responded the way you did. You got those lights back up and, and the community went back out there. And so I know that that was just one, that, that's, that's an easy example. That we're able to see, that I'm sure there's a lot of different ways that we're not seeing. And so I just, I, I really wanted to recognize that, appreciate that. Thank you to your entire department for that. Um, uh, same when we're talking about this implement weather, we had that public works. Uh, just was phenomenal um over the past couple of weeks. Thank you to all of our folks over there. Um, the warming stations, so I wanted to touch on what Carl had talked about. Um, awesome community effort um there. Uh, as mentioned, I will miss our next meeting. Um, so Lori, you know, you're, you know, you're right up to run a minute. So uh, you'll get to enjoy that. Um, and, and as I was going, um. And one thing I wanted to say to all of you as counselors, uh, those of you that have run for reelection that are still here. And it made me think about it, talking to Carl about, you know, is he, how is he going to attend, how he's feeling physically, you know? Uh, four, five, six years ago, when I'm really paying attention to council and then I'm getting on council. You know, you guys, there were, I mean, there were empty, there were empty chairs. I mean, Jordan and I would talk about when Jordan was interviewing, kind of what's going on here with this council? You know, we'd miss, you know, two, we'd have two open chairs, continually having to fill vacancies. And I just wanted, I just wanted to thank everyone, you know, I mean, you, everybody, you guys go out of your way uh to make the meeting. You have excuses not to. Carl, that's every excuse in the world not to participate. He found a way uh to do it tonight. Uh, so just thank you, you guys, for everyone for your service to the community. There's a lot more meetings we got to do past this. Uh, yeah, just really appreciate it. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.